For Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. This time stands for Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're starting off tonight. We have special recognitions and presentations. I'm pleased to Mr. Nardelli, are you here? I saw you a second ago. There you are. John Paul Nardelli, Healthy Harrison is here tonight to speak with us. Would you be so kind to come? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. I'm happy to present. Good clapping next to that. Wow, right? It's a great presentation and I should say that good. Yeah, maybe scratch that one. I just want to figure, does that work? Maybe not. Yeah, give it a test run. I want to preview this guy from kids. Quick little demo I wanted to share with you.
Even after the program, I also want to say that I'm really excited that we're the first school because I saw my fellow classmates as well as myself working on their health and focusing more on their mentality towards things because of this program. I enjoyed doing this program at my school because it helped encourage us to like be more focused on our health, allowing me to become more aware, more focused, and like just pay more attention to my health.
The thing I liked most about the program was the sense of accomplishment. It's like a good motivation to like keep yourself healthy and gave me something to work towards every day to make sure I completed my goals to help me to become like a better person.
What I liked most about the program was even though it was a simple clicking button, it kept your mind on something you can accomplish each day. I'd like to see this program continue at my school because it has a positive impact on people, like helping them live a healthier life and something to look forward to.
Our state does have a lot of obesity. Like if you look on the charts on the map for the United States, ours is really high. Like it's bad. And it's a really good way to encourage the youth, and not even just the youth. I know some parents and teachers who were asking like, oh, what's this? And they were actually getting involved and intrigued by it. They wanted to be like, well, if my kid can do this, I can do this. My mother was like that. She is currently, she's getting ready for a 5K now. She didn't want to, or I love my mom, I'm gonna expose her a little bit. She'd rather be at home with a bag of candy. But this is something that can help push people to be better than they were yesterday.
Health is important to me because a lot of my family has had issue, health issues in the past, and they rely on me or other family members to help them around or do things around the house. And if I'm down, then most of the house is down. So it is very important to me to stay healthy so I can continue helping my family out. Having a program like this has really helped me prioritize my health overall and keep staying in a routine, which is the goal has really helped with that because I remember, oh, I gotta do this, this and this today. And it just really helped me overall keep up on it. And sometimes if I was unmotivated, I think, oh, well, I gotta get my points today so I can win prizes. And I feel good proud of myself for standing on top of it to be kind of a role model for like my little sister or my friends.
I just want to say thank you to WVU Medicine, United Hospital Center, L.D. Harrison, and West Virginia University for this wonderful program. Thanks to everyone that contributed to bring them together this amazing program.
I'd like to thank Healthy Harrison, West Virginia University, and WVU Medicine, United Hospital Center.
I want to say a huge thank you to WVU Medicine, United Hospital Center, Healthy Harrison, and West Virginia University. I'd like to take a moment and thank the Harrison County Board of Education for introducing this Healthy Harrison program. Helped me become better as a person and like better in all aspects of my life. I want to say thank you to WVU Medicine, United Hospital Center, West Virginia University, and Healthy Harrison. This program is really necessary throughout our school and Harrison County and all of West Virginia because these are the basic necessities of life. Without being able to take care of yourself, how can you take care of your community?
All right, so thank you for letting me share that. I'm really proud of those kids. A year since I got in front of the board, and I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to go ahead and plug the door. We've had two separate pilots. The first one was just with Lincoln High School at the help of Mr. Decker. And then just recently, we were in four of the community high schools. So we had an incredible impact and just being able to make a difference in these kids' lives is, has been substantial. We had pretty lofty goals going into this program. Given the fact that we completed four projects in the business sector, we really had high expectations. You know, when we go into these businesses, the CEOs typically drive the ship and they put pretty heavy expectations on their employees to get involved in the programs they support. So it was really unclear as to how this, effective this was going to be when we got into the school system. But certainly with the help of Dora, Pam, and Scott Davis, we were able to connect with the principals and really show how this project was number one, not going to impact the workload of their day, number two, make a difference in the kids and the schools, and three, offer some really good incentives to keep them motivated. And I know that the font is pretty small, but the short story is that there were three key metrics that we were looking at to show that we could have an impact. And like I said, we set the goal very high for each of these schools. And essentially, we wanted to see if we could get a large percentage of these students enrolled. And so of all the schools, we wanted to see 960 students enrolled from these four high schools, of which we saw 1,043. So we surpassed the expectations by 17%, which is incredibly significant. I don't know if any of you have worked in the healthcare, but it is incredibly difficult to have a new program implemented and adopted. And so it was really great to see that enrollment number. Secondly, we saw an incredible percentage of engagement. So of those 1,043 students, we had about, our goal was to get 40% of those students actively engaged. So this meant on a regular basis, they were checking out the app, they were looking at the health tips, they were showing that they were doing their daily goals, and we saw 50%. Now where we felt short and where there's room for improvement is in the fact that we didn't have a large number show a high level of engagement. That meant roughly 50 to 100% of the program having been completed. And we saw 15, you know, we were shy of that by 5%. So again, we had very lofty goals and I was really grateful to see that we were able to hit those goals. If you could switch to the next slide. And when we went into this, we were really unsure of the path forward. And so what we were really eager to do, initially, we wanted to start in the middle school system. But what we were concerned about is if we started in middle school, it would be very challenging to move up to the high schools, right? Only because it may be less cool. So what we decided to do was take on the high schools first. So to date, the only two high schools that have not participated but are scheduled to participate are Bridgeport and Liberty. At which case, the second part of the year, we would have every one of the schools participating. But what's really exciting is that over the summer, we've had the opportunity to pull students from each of these schools to help create some of the content. So whereas in the past, we had local health experts, these are nutritionists or psychologists giving the daily coaching tips, now it'll be high school students coaching other high school students. And that way, when we go to the middle schools, they can say, oh, wow, that guy plays football or she's in, you know, she's a lesbian. Or we, there's just so many opportunities to explore ways to promote the program and also elevate the students from within. And while we don't have, I don't want to spend too much time, I would encourage you to check out our Facebook page, which is Change Your State. You could also search Healthy Harrison. But on there, you'll see that we have a catalog of roughly 10 to 20 interviews that we had, you know, on set at the schools with Amy Heber-Busch-Bolson, our president, and other board members of ours interviewing students, talking about their health journey. And some of those stories are incredibly compelling where students are sharing that, you know, they struggle with type 2 diabetes and that they're constantly monitoring their health. And it was incredibly honest, incredibly motivating, not just for high school students, but I think for adults as well. So I have prepared a MOU to be signed by Superintendent Stoller and just want to thank all of you again for allowing us the opportunity to be in the schools, having to answer any questions that you may have. But again, just wanted to show up to say thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you. I, do you remember the first time we went and got involved with this where you ran the board and we did a little program with all the employees?
Oh, so yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up. So that would have been roughly four years ago. So it happened just before COVID. And I'm really glad you said that because I failed to mention that the wellness committee for the board had reached out to me and asked if employees could be involved. So this program will also be extended to employees at no cost. Again, WVU Medicine, United Hospital Center, and West Virginia University has put the bill for a lot of this. And so this year, I'd say we roughly gave anywhere from $20,000 to $25,000 worth of, you know, incentives to the schools. And that doesn't even account for the time that our team is putting in this, the video production, the app. So we're really kind of investing all of our money in here. We've kind of gone all in on this project. No pressure this time. But just like I said, really appreciate it and really excited to offer this opportunity to employees as well.
Thank you. I agree for that excellent program.
Thank you. Any other questions? Are we good? Okay, thank you.
Next, we have our delegations for this evening. Each delegation will have five minutes to speak. And I will caution speakers that you are unsure of the factual nature of any claim, comment, or allegation you're about to make. The Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult with legal counsel first. They are asked to express, speakers are asked to express themselves in civil manners at all times with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by the content of your comments. First delegation we have this evening is Teri Mole. Ball?
I'm here on behalf of the Quiadale Museum and School. And I'd like to start just by saying that at the schoolhouse, at the entryway, there's a placard that states, "Welcome." The bell of this landmark public school first rang for its pupils in 1922. The constant use since the school is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Initially, students in eighth grade studied here and early school, 4-H clubs met here in the 1920s. In 1935, this civilian conservation corps established camp on this Harrison County site. This camp was one of the 67 in West Virginia during the New Deal era. A museum on the site recognizes the many achievements of the CCC program across the state and honors the memories of the CCC participants everywhere. And the reason I'm here today is in support for the museum as well as the schoolhouse and all that it represents to the community and for the sake of the community and for the protection of the heritage museum and to honor all students, CCC core members, educational establishments protecting the history of West Virginia. I ask the board to stop the future sale of this property, allowing it to continue as we have known it for these past 100 years. Thank you.
Next is Teresa Noble. Teresa Noble?
I just wanted to say let the place stay where it is and let people continue doing all the good things.
Thank you. Next, Michael Spataford?
Good evening, I'm Michael Spataford, President of the Clarksburg History Museum. That's the hat I'm wearing tonight anyway. The Clarksburg History Museum, one of our main goals is to preserve history here in Harrison County. So we've been meeting with the Harrison County Commission staff. We feel that it's time that the Harrison County Commission put some money and some effort, some of their resources into preserving history here in Harrison County, supporting our museums, supporting our other groups that are protecting this history. So we're constantly working towards tourism. And right now, the Quiadale School, the Heritage Crafts, the Crafters, the CCC Museum, that's right off of the interstate. That's a great draw for tourism in Harrison County. So that benefits all of us, not only the workers there, you know, that are making crafts. It's a, it can be a great, it's an educational tool. They give classes there. So I'm not sure exactly what the Board of Education's role is in this, but as the history museum, we feel that everyone needs to be working together to preserve our history, to teach our students and all of our citizens about our past and how we can use that past to work towards the future. So as you know, we have school field trips that come into the Clarksburg History Museum, and that's what we do. We teach them the history of Clarksburg, Harrison County, and West Virginia. We give them a tour of the museum and then we take them out into the city and show them other historic sites. You know, they have lunch downtown and they learn about the history here in Clarksburg and Harrison County especially. So, you know, to suggest getting rid of the CCC camp museum and the Quiadale School really doesn't make any sense as an educational institution or for tourism visitors. It's a win-win for all of us. And so I'm just here to represent the museum, to support the people of Quiadale. And anything that we can do to help save the Quiadale School and the CCC camp museum, we're willing to do that. And if, you know, if you have suggestions on how we as the museum, board of directors, and other museums in Harrison County can work together to save this museum that's right off of the interstate, you know, just let us know how we can help. And, you know, if we need to go to the county commission with specific ideas and plans, you know, that's what we'll do. So thank you for your time and attention and I'll probably be talking to you soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephen Santilli?
I only got a minute 22.
Just want to check.
I talk too much. My name's Stephen Santilli. I'm here representing myself, no one else, and I'm not here representing any entity anywhere except me. Of the 21 historical places on the National Register in Harrison County, the Quiadale School is the only one that really drives historical tourism. It's the only one that brings money into the county. I've seen the register books. You have people from Boise, Idaho. I've driven to Boise. It takes three days. There are people from Arkansas, Massachusetts, Florida, people who specifically drive the Quiadale on purpose because of the existence of that building. It's the only one to bring dollars into the county, and it is the only one that's really driving historical tourism in this county, which is incredibly important. I verified with the state Historical Preservation Office that the director sent correspondence to the Harrison County Commission regarding Quiadale property to determine whether it is on the National Register of Historical Places, and the director says it was. I asked for more details about what was in the letter, what was discussed, maybe potential plans or, you know, selling it or is the county going to tear it down themselves or will the entity purchasing the property do it themselves? I was referred to someone higher up who left a message, still waiting to call. The county commission paid for real estate appraisal anticipation of the sale of the property. One commissioner said to me, they know nothing about any interested parties or entities who want to purchase that property. It's like they don't know what's going on. I reviewed all of the main due agendas for the Harrison County Commission in regards to sell this particular property. There's no mention of it. There's no request to have Commission President Susan Thomas reach out to the state Historical Preservation Office to clarify the status of property or the county administrator. There is no, there was no mention of it. Now, there were, I found in a couple of the agendas, the county was talking about counting on property that they want to talk about possibly selling. Quiadale School wasn't listed amongst the eight or nine properties that were listed. I put them on Google Map. None of it was Quiadale School. I think it would be wise for you, the board, to consider seating maybe four or five feet east of the access road to give whomever's going to go in there, I'm not going to say the name I heard, but whomever's going to go in there, to give a wider access egress to their property. Because the property owner and the residents refuses to sell. The genie hotspot refuses to sell. So if they need a wider access for trucks to come in and out, then maybe seat them four or five feet to widen that road a little bit. And the last thing I have to say, Mr. President and members of the board, superintendent, transparency. It doesn't seem there's a whole lot of transparency on the other side of this issue. I would humbly recommend that you invite one or all three of the county commissioners to come here to attend the meeting and discuss the property issue in public, in public. So we, the citizens, and more importantly, the voters of Harrison County, understand what this issue is about. This is the last thing I'll say. Fresh air will lift the sting off of this issue. The citizens and visitors in this county will be appreciative, I'm very sure. Thank you for your time.
Joyce Harland?
You guys, I'll have a packet that I gave you, which has got a lot of information. I didn't want to just stand up here and say something without backing it up so you have my background. So I'm calling it private, but I know it's not going to be all this. One hundred and two years ago, Dr. Pickings gave the Foxman, one of the headers to Harrison County Board of Education, through teaching institution, to serve the community of Quiadale. As of today, it still serves as a teaching institution. The community's already suffered the destruction of hundreds of trees and ice net on homes and multiple wildlife. I've always felt the daily property owned by the Board of Education and the county commission actually belongs to the property, to the taxpayers of that county. Now we're faced with losing 102 years of history. I'm imploring you to preserve this wonderful building so full of memories for so many. I cannot fathom an educated condemning of the demolition of this wonderful schoolhouse. We might get a little chunk of change now, but what we're offering is the future for tourism, history, and education. West Virginia Heritage Crafts is a 37-year-old predominantly women-run artisans cooperative with the mission statement to develop and advance West Virginia cottage craft industry through education and training. We have operated out of this school for the last 33 years. At this, nobody's ever said anything about keeping us out. During this time, we are supported by over 384 small business centers, taught countless classes in Appalachian art, performed hundreds of demonstrations of various arts and crafts, and right now we have basket classes scheduled for 13 feet. At the moment, there are 28 active small business centers in the shop. They will all be immediately impacted. We have 18 others that we purchased product from. 11 members of the AMON Community Education Outreach Services meet there once a month. They met their 6,000 in 2013, don't have a problem. 16 members of the Barbershop Bluegrass Band in January, the last Saturday, they're in love, along with all the people that come to sit and listen to them. All that will be gone. We have 1,750 people that follow us on Facebook. The State CCC Museum was founded 22 years ago in a schoolroom that's still occupied by Dr. Robert Anderson, Professor Emeritus of WVU, and one of our members. He is now 92 and hospitalized in very serious condition. His legacy will no longer have a home on the campground grounds of Camp Harrison. This is an affront to him and the hundreds of families who have donated artifacts to the museum in that schoolhouse. Some people travel a thousand miles, and I just came from Lakeland, Florida, to see that museum, to find the picture of his father, which he did. They come there, they look at the pictures of their loved ones, and that, they'll no longer have that. Our state hero, Woody Williams, was a CCC. And customers and visitors to our retail shop and the CCC museum are devastated by the ones that know what's happened. The outcome has been tremendous. I put out six petitions in six places. I had 261 signatures. Our petitions were signed by only the residents and travelers as well. They were guests of the possibility of the school, and none of our organizations been won. Between June 1st and August 3rd, we had 85-plus visitors from 16 different states, and this is only the ones that signed our law. Some escaped and didn't sign. All these people visit the museum too. We had a hot dog sale last Sunday. We were overwhelmed with dozens of people coming in. We have customers that make us a annual stop as they travel from one point to the other. They go in and buy things from us. They go across the street, get gas and cars. They go up and buy food, and some of them overnight loss. We may be small, but we are a unique tourist destination. We are in contact with several government officials. She was in Zoom call with the other people that were in that call. All of those trying to help us save this property. Also, we have you our combined objective statements for both us and the CCC museum. We are very intertwined. We keep the museum alive because there's not enough of them to actually mend this shop. So we're asking both the O E and Harrison County, don't sell us into oblivion. Partner with us to enhance all the possibilities into the future. We've had, just become aware of grants and other assistance that we could get to offset some of the repairs that we actually need to do. We're 102 years old, and she's still standing strong and proud. Please allow her to continue to places where her loved ones. Here is the petition with all the signatures we want us to look at. You do have a copy of our visitor log showing all the people.
Jeanette Paul?
Joyce had to make a second. Okay, I'm just here today to say I have lived around 28, 82 years. I've passed this school every day. My grandchildren and some of my children have went through this school. And what these people in town, and younger people, don't understand. It can be a barn, it can be a house, it can be a school. If it's old and historical, keep it, keep it. You can't rebuild a historical building. You can't bring back history. And there's nobody young here, which is what I consider young, that you can take out there to that school and show them the artifacts. They don't know what it is. They don't know what they are. If that stuff goes away, it's lost. There's nobody that's got that stuff anymore. Well, I do, but I'm a former. And I hope you will reconsider and somehow get it back from the other place and see if it did it to the nunn. Promise. And thank you very much.
I thank you for the opportunity to address you. I guess I'm here a little more on a personal matter, even though I am with the House of Delegates. I guess I'm here a more on a personal matter, even though I am with the House of Delegates, and I am on the Economic Development and Tourism Committee. So I am very interested in economic development and tourism, but not at the cost of giving up our, our historic properties and our culture. But I'm also here, I also am the person that founded this organization, the West Virginia Heritage Crafts, which we call the Co-op. Back in the late days, I started a organization called People for Clarksburg, and it was made up of quite a good, a large number of businesses and business leaders in the community. And in that process, we developed the walking tour that is still used in Clarksburg, the historic walking tour. But we also, myself and Marge Benninger, who worked with me at that time, were outward ones that founded the Co-op. They were to bring crafting into downtown Clarksburg, and they were located at that time from nineteen eighty-eight till nineteen ninety-one in the Freelanders Building in downtown Clarksburg. And even at that point, they did a lot of teaching, classes, et cetera. The Department of History, the Department of Tourism is very active in developing tourism around the state. In fact, we passed legislation in twenty-two that for the Hatfield McCoy Parks and Trails. And since that time, the Hatfield and McCoy Trails and Parks is one of the most visited attractions in West Virginia, bringing people from all of this country and other countries. So I'm, I'm here to basically ask the board to consider the opportunities that we have with the school and the fact that it is there, it's housing the West Virginia Crafters and the CCC. And I'd like to implore you to continue to let it exist. Thank you.
My name's Pam Snyder, and I represent just one of the dozens of individuals for small businesses that will be affected if the sale and possible demolition of the Quiet Dell School property is allowed to move forward. The sale of this historic building is to erase yet another piece of history for Harrison County. Now, we've all seen the erasure of history going on all around the country, and it's so sad to see this happening in our own community. The CCC museum represents one piece of that history. The CCC museum re, uh, I'm sorry. That will be, the CCC museum represents one piece of that history that will be eliminated should the building be torn down. I wish you could see the excitement of the people that come in there and the pride of the families who see their fathers' faces, their grandfathers' faces on all the different displays. Many come in with pictures of the family members who were stationed at Camp Harrison. Some spend hours in that little room. Others travel long distance just to see the spot where their father's or grandfather's proud story of the Dawgwood began. Since Camp Harrison encampment was located on this spot, the collection of donated items need to remain there. The building houses CCC artifacts, photographs, demonstrating the hard work produced by the men of the CCC. The CCC is a volunteer organization that has kept this museum going for years. Instead of tearing down or erasing this proud piece of history, please help us not only to exist, but assist us with opportunities to maintain and grow the museum. The Quiet Dell School building also promotes educational activities that promote West Virginia heritage. Classes, classes and events in the building demonstrate many of the lost arts of indigenous Appalachia. These talented individuals represent close to thirty small businesses that will be erased along with the historical education they provide. These individuals help maintain the interior display areas of the shop and CCC museum, the marketing of all items on display, as well as welcome visitors and help them interpret the history of the Depression era, the educational use of the school, land, buildings, and the cultural and economic history of individual work ethics. While I've been there, I've had many folks come in who attended school in the building that hold so many memories for them. This included an eighty-four-year-old gentleman who said four generations of his family had attended the school. Just last week, a gentleman came in and walked right over to the closet where he had his first kiss. I do know that the community is outraged, and there are many petitions already signed and available for your review. I do know that many schools that hold memories for local West Virginians in our state have been torn down in the name of progress, and I understand that. The difference here is that this school is special. It's a trifecta of history, which includes the old schoolhouse, the CCC museum, and Heritage Crafts and Education.
Mrs. Snyder, I'd like to move you along.
Oh, yeah. I'm inviting you to come to see this little gem, to understand why we're so passionate about saving it. This building and all that it represents is the embodiment of the American spirit and dedication of so many. To lose it would mean losing a piece of the soul of not only our community, but our great country. Please help us not only preserve it, but improve and extend upon all the hard work that's been done over the last several decades. Thank you for.
If the board does not have any objection, I think it might be appropriate to move the legal matters. Sorry. If, if the residents of board members do not have any objection, I think it might be appropriate to move the item in legal matters currently sitting at the end of our agenda up to the next item for discussion or for our legal matters. It's an agenda item under legal. If there are no objectives, objections taking that item now, we can move that before our consent items. Item eleven, what are your consent items? And I know that there is some, some discussion in regards to executive session. I would like to bring into this, is anyone interested in pointing forth a motion for executive session?
I move pursuant to six-nine-eight-four-twelve West Virginia Code that before going to executive session to discuss property, sorry, six-nine-eight-four-nine of West Virginia Code that before going to executive session to consider matters involving or affecting purchase, sale, or lease of property, advanced construction, paying investment, public funds, and other matters involving commercial competition, which if being public might adversely affect the financial or interest of the Harrison County Board of Education.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will go into the executive session.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are returned to regular session. Okay, so at this point in time, we moved the legal item in regards to the discussion of whether or not to purchase or repurchase the land in Quaidel. I'm going to let everybody know what's going on here at the moment, so that you don't have to sit around and wait until we get to the end of our agenda. At this point in time, the Board of Education has no way to legally vote on whether to accept or refuse the property. This is going to have to be a decision that the county commission makes. Once the county commission makes a decision on whether they want to sell the property, and whether they decide to or they decide not to, it's going to be their decision, then we have a 90-day window at that point to determine whether we would like to accept the property back, or whether we would like to have our exercise our first right of refusal and allow them to continue with whatever plans that they're going to make. So at this point in time, the Board of Education is not going to take any action, and is not going to take any recordations for any type of action until the county commission reaches out to us to determine what they're going to do and how they're going to proceed forward.
Can I ask a question?
I'll allow this one, yes.
Okay. Have you guys formally been approached by the commission to the sale of this property? Referring to any rumors we've already worked with them?
We have been approached by the commission, and we've not been discussing their plans, or what they've been told, what they're planning on doing. We were approached by the commission in regards to discussing some things that we've talked about in executive session. We were on with the commission's attorney. Okay? So if that settles that, then we'll move on to our consent items. And you're more than welcome to stay and watch the rest of our exciting meetings tonight.
I want to thank the three of you guys that did make it out to see this all, and I would appreciate it if the rest of you could try and come and see what is at stake, but we understand who you're in.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. This brings us down to consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent items as presented?
I'm ready to approve consent items.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on consent items?
On letter C of your enrollments, what number are we up to for transfers from Liberty to Burr?
We are at 25 others, and we're up to 60, and I have New King, and since I put on the board agenda, 10 more.
So we're looking at two buses? Or one?
Because they're not all.
Oh, they're not all in our lineups?
Yeah. All for Liberty, but they all come from. They're not all freshman, so those are not for me. We can see that.
Does that include the ones going to other high schools?
No, I just said it's just Liberty. Liberty, Burr, the 70.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Your business.
The Dr. Seitzler motion. Okay, thank you.
All right. New business. Letter A, Black Heritage Festival request. There are motion to accept the Black Heritage Festival request. Put it on the floor for discussion. Motion would be to approve a funding request of $5,000 for the Black Heritage Festival.
Has this been done in the past?
Yes, we've done this.
Probably in the last six or seven years.
Yes. More than that, yeah. How many motions will you approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Do we do any other festivals like Salem or Land Festival or anything like that?
I don't believe any of them have approached us at all either. Did I hear them? Academy and Heritage Festivals?
No, they did not approach us.
The original, I think in the land, they talked about STEM activity.
Yes.
So it was an educational thing, I think that's how it was. So now there's just a form of request.
Any further discussion? It states it in the third paragraph, the inclusion of science, technology, engineering, and math. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Preschool contracts, 2024-2025. Is there a motion to approve preschool contracts?
So many.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
These are, it's really new, because I don't remember if there is any new ones. These are old ones.
Where's Jungle Junction?
They're Chisholm, and there's no new ones.
Okay. Who are the ones we're funding?
Cubby's Childcare Center, Last Impressions, which is at the FBI, Mother Goose in Clarksville, and Jungle Junction, Chisholm.
So these are, stay the same?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We need to call for a roll call.
I just missed the aye.
You just missed the aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Right from speed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Right, exactly.
All right. Letter D, approval of Ralph Peterson to provide.
C, textbook.
Oh, sorry, C. I didn't, letter C. Textbook, receiver, storage, and distribution agreement with James's law. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Letter D, approval of Ralph Peterson to provide clerk of the work services for Simpson and Nutter Ford Elementary SBA projects. Recommended action from superintendent is to approve and issue a purchase order in amount of $110,500. Is there a motion to approve?
That's the services for salary. That would be the services for there.
No, Jill wanted to make sure that we did not exceed that amount, so if we have it, if we've already had it approved before, we can bring it back.
If it's the.
If it does.
He will actually bill by an hour.
Yeah.
Who's the owner? Are we in discussion?
He's local, he's local, he's worked for us. He was a clerk who works for the Lost Creek Elementary School project. He has worked for McKinley, and has overseen a lot of our projects that we have done with our HVAC and our roof. Very familiar with our facilities. He's extremely thorough. He's been a local architect for years, has contractor's license. He's very good, he takes meticulous notes, he takes a close look and gander at the pay apps to make sure that they're being built timely, but not being built for things that have not been completed. So, you know, he does a nice job for us.
Thank you. Could you sometime maybe invite him to a meeting, so at least we can put a name and face.
Absolutely.
Name and face. Because I go out a lot, I got to Nutter Ford the other day when they was taking them, there was two or three guys standing around, and two or three guys working, and I didn't do the work, I just wanted to see. Come to find out, one of them was LaMarty himself. He got out of his company.
It's also important, you can put an advertisement out, and if that was the only person that applied to the position.
I don't think I asked for a motion, but is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is the authorization to purchase new buses.
I think that we purchase new buses as presented. We've had them in the past.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Which one, those are two, right?
Yes, this is two. Any yes?
Okay, thank you.
All right. The motion is for approval in the amount of $263,614 to approve the purchase of two new buses. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Memorandum of understanding between Harrison County Board of Education and Health Harrison. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve in O U for Harrison County Board of Education and Health Harrison.
Is there a second? All right. Is there any discussion? Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to skip the superintendent goals for the moment, and we'll take board self appraisal at this time. This is not an actionable item. I will say that at this point, we have, as a board, taken our self appraisal. And what the self appraisal is, is a list of questions on how we, as a board, feel that we are functioning. And it gives the list of questions to go anywhere from, do we understand the strategic plan, to do we feel we're being open and out in public? So there's a lot of different questions. And we are posting this on the county website for anyone to go view. So you should be able, after tonight's meeting, to see this on the county website. Or, or do you not wear that?
Steve, I apologize, I was on the phone.
Board goals.
What is it?
Board goals.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Board goals.
Board self appraisal.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
It's on here in the text.
Yeah, we can work on that.
Thank you. All right. Administrative guidelines. This would be a good one. Again, this is, there's no action to be taken in this, it's just a group of public discussion on the administrative guidelines that we have, correct?
You have a hard copy of those. And then on top of that, I've given you the suggested edits. These were truly draft forms, so we know there's some plate those, you know, whatever that one was.
I may not need all my tabs then.
So, and then I've included on the top of that, we didn't have an official administrative guideline or recipe, it was included in our own policy. So I've included what we had before. And then below that is the cell phone, what we had before. We didn't have that parsed out as a separate administrative.
All right. Let's take them one at a time, and if anybody has any discussion, we'll just do one next one, instead of throwing a whole bunch of different stuff out there.
Can you go through the list if you didn't have a lot of questions? Like, there's some that's pretty straightforward.
On page one, we have letter grade percentages. Do they have percentages?
That's something that needs taking out. We've got it in the last. Check on it. And also where it says summative assessment, it will say semester exam. Because that word has been used interchangeably.
Are, are we accepting summative assessments also? Like, some people may have a project, or is it going to be a written exam? An exam can't be a project.
It can be a project. I think it's confusing because of the West Virginia Summit of assessment.
Yeah, they think, they think Stan's right.
Yeah, so we were displaying the semester exam. And they could make it.
Yeah, I might have seen it, we're always project.
Yeah. Project.
Okay, one time became a one.
It could be a. On page three, paragraph four, it says, within a makeup days permitted at the discretion of individual schools. I thought it was one day for absence, so if they were gone five days.
Well, it used to be, one day out for every, you could have, you had one makeup day.
If you have one, if you missed five days, you have five.
Five days, yes.
So, and, and this gives me a little bit of agit of individual discretion of individual schools.
They hit stage three on.
Page three, three of the grade.
Yeah, I know, with myself, because I have.
Yeah. And it's paragraph four. I don't know, I don't think it should be up to the discretion of individual school. I think it should be uniform.
Or at least.
It's always.
Yeah, I think it's one day for, yeah, we'll make that clear.
Take that out.
At the discretion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make it clear. One day for every absence.
While we're on page three, also, there is no mention about middle school retention, or the possibility of retention.
Was that, and they mentioned it in another policy.
It was in the big fat book.
Yeah, it says what you build, which is.
Two, two core subjects.
Two, two core subjects, but it doesn't say that you retain. Does it say that you retain?
Does it say possible?
A student can earn no more than two abs during the school year to receive an end-of-the-year passing grade for that subject. But it doesn't say, it does not address retention.
What he wants to put in there could, could be.
Three.
We could add it there.
And then did they say, are we, I know the principal, middle school principals had mentioned something about summer school credit recovery.
We talked about that.
We're going to talk about that.
The credit recovery platform is all changing. And we just upped our Apex licenses, and they're telling us that they're using a new platform. We don't know what that's going to be, or what it's even going to be available for.
So we don't have.
Correct.
That is correct. We, we can see it, it's they're using the same company, and they're current media. And we know that there's six, seven day grading information. Of course, it's available. Okay. I don't know whether it could possibly be the first one or.
Okay, see.
So you want something mentioned in here that credit recovery is a possibility?
Maybe you can call it remediation, because they don't actually earn credits in different schools. So we call it, we can call it course remediation.
Okay. As long as there's something in there where a kid actually gets content in whatever they're failing.
Yes.
In order to move ahead to the next grade.
And I think that principals really wanted to focus on the LA and MAP. Those two are particular, because those are the things that we are assessed on. Particularly the MAP, those are the things, those are the skills that build on one another.
Right.
And move to grade up, grade up.
Yeah, because I think in our old, in the old policy, was it 5501? It goes, it's a whole big detail about promotion and retention. And this does not, this is kind of bare bones. And I think it's important that we hold, that they know we're holding a mechanical.
Yes. And you're right, there's some place in here that it is there in this.
Yeah.
But if you look at that third paragraph down on page three, it says a student can earn more than two abs during the school year.
Right. But it doesn't say what happens after that. It just says you can fail the class. So what happens then?
Could be poss- possibility of retention.
Yes.
Yes.
Why we're still on that?
You say anything better than, or more useful than just possibility?
Well, they have to choose to do it. You could say opportunity, maybe, instead of possibility.
But shall they retain them?
And they retain?
Shall means shall.
Yeah. That's got a lot of teeth.
It's got a lot of teeth there. I mean, you could say may. I mean, that is, may be retained. You're exceptional. I'm not just teaching.
Well, and then the other thing is, may be retained, if they do the credit recovery and make up, then they're not retained, they can move on to the next.
You just want something.
May is not here. May is not guaranteed. Shall is guaranteed. May is not guaranteed.
Yes.
They just, she just want to say.
I want to know.
That's just all the thing. Yeah. I'm good with that.
Okay, and then, middle school exams. That one parag- that second paragraph is a little crazy. I understand the process to be that an eighth grade student receives a nine-week report card four times a year. But if you're taking a high school class, you actually get three, six weeks' grades in an exam. I'm not sure that that says that, but, good.
Is this the wording?
Yeah.
If you look on the suggested edits, she's reworded that. I thought it sounded clear.
It's in the second paragraph.
It's, and they get their actual six-week grade or progress report, not their report cards. An eighth grade student would get a six-week progress report, and then a nine-week report card.
Okay.
Where, where? Because they're taking a high school cr- their high school course for credit.
They'll, they'll be getting the six grade card.
Yes. And that that grade is actually on their transcript.
High school transcript.
That, yeah, they need to know their grades. Makes you, on eighth grade, are taking a high school course.
My grade is.
Yeah. That it's actually on their.
On their account.
I just thought it was kind of. I had a teacher read it, and they said, what?
I have some issues on page five. You're finishing Mary Frank again?
We're moving to page five, he doesn't have.
Are you finishing Mary Frank again?
Yes.
So at the very top of the paragraph, top of page first paragraph, same thing. One day to make up work for everyone's. And I think we need to have something in there for extenuating circumstances, which we've talked about. I mean, I've had kids with cancer, you know, so, or they, appendix burst. Okay, so now here's the big enough. High school semester exams. They need to, what I found in my career, the best thing that ever worked, was we still gave them the carrot of low absences. So they take seven to eight classes, seven at RCP, right, and they did the others. So each semester, they have to take one core and one elective. And if their absences are five or less, they don't, they don't have to take the other two. Same thing second semester. So by the end of the year, they have to take two electives, two cores, and they get out of four of them. So there, so there's some incentive there for them to have good attendance. And, and then we can also offer the option, say, for example, kid has two Bs and an A, but they don't have to take the exam. They can take it to try to up their GPA. And I think we should give them that opportunity. I mean, especially on the high school level, you're talking scholarships, getting it, getting into a nine-week school, it makes a difference. Even if they're not going to college, I mean, it makes a difference going into the military. They look at your work ethic when you go into trade school. They look at your absences, for sure, when you go into trade school.
It shouldn't count against them if they take that test and don't advance to the next grade.
If they're, that used to be, if they're choosing to take it, and they don't get the grade, then we just ignore it.
Yes.
But if they have to take it, the grades. But I, I think, and it's not too bad. I mean, teachers keep track of their attendance, so they should know whether the kids are excused or not.
I think the only problem last year was, nobody wanted to address what extenuating circumstances were. There was no list of extenuating circumstances. Like, my brother is graduating from the Naval Academy, and, you know, he graduates on Friday. We, you know, that's a once-in-a-lifetime event, it's an honor to graduate from the, you know, so to me, that should be an excused absence. I, I know we allow college visits. That should be an excused absence. I'm not in favor of family vacation.
That would be.
Plus, yes, but if there is an issue with your appendix bursting, and you're hospitalized and have to have surgery, those should be excused. So I think if we identify what classifies excuse, then we can actually focus on who is really being truant and doesn't fall under the exam policy. I think there was no.
It was all black and white.
It was just black and white. Either you missed them, or you didn't. And that's what really threw everybody in a, in a tizzy. Because nobody had, had any idea what to excuse or not to excuse. And we do have a lot of new administrators.
What would you consider like a chronic illness form? Like a student that's, and we get a lot of this.
Yeah.
A doctor will say, this child can miss two days a week. We, we had a student that was written off for 110 days by a doctor. So then we're going to say you have to take exams, but he's going to show. That was one that Jim tried to take to court, but 110 days, excused by a doctor.
And.
That's what we run into, and so it becomes subjective.
Right.
For them to decide.
What would the, what would the court do with that?
They did nothing with that.
And then we didn't do it either.
So we're going to excuse them. Yeah, we have to.
But then what about students not 110 days?
Well, and he gave me another example, because I did talk to Jim a little bit. I said, what's another example? We have students with the psychedelic seizures. At one school, well documented, they have a chronic illness form. They go to the doctor, they see a therapist, they get lots of notes. He said, we've got another family that's dealing with it. Parents don't do anything. That child is never excused, because she's in the truancy. He has really worked with her, worked with community care, like you said, tried to not get her into truancy, but there isn't inequity there because of same illnesses. One school, she's excused because they have resources to take her to the doctor, therapist. He said, I get notes every time. And the other little girl's got the same diagnosis, but not.
If the principal can make that distinction.
Well, I was going to say.
I don't think principals really feel like they can.
Doesn't have all of the. You need to convince them.
I think that everyone should take exams. That's my feeling.
You're going to kill, you're going to kill absences.
I can understand that, but you get into muddy, muddy water when you have a situation. There's so many different situations that can arise. Crohn's, you know, back problems, you know, I mean, who knows?
Yeah.
And we're not in the business of overturning doctors' notes. We can't do that.
We did talk to Mr. Kirby for a little, I said, is it moving the needle? And he said, no. He said, your good kids are going to school, they're doing what they need to do, but the ones that are absent are not. So we've got all of these.
That's my feeling, is exams are not going to make a difference to a kid who doesn't want to go to school.
And we did search. But then why can we not reward the ones that are busting their tails, showing up and doing the work? Or the kids that, you know, we can't just look at the low-end kids. We need to push the upper ones up at the same time as we're trying to pull the lower ones.
I, I agree, but I'm not opposed to the, uh, stronger kids taking exams either. I think it's a good exercise.
It is, and this, and then if we base part of them on absences and part of them are mandatory, they're getting that experience. They're getting four years of taking exams. But they're also being rewarded for having their, come to school, their butts in a check and doing the work.
Let me throw this one in there. How many college visits?
All right, now, some of us.
I think they're allowed the three. They, I don't know if it's in pause.
No, no.
No. But usually on a college visit, I, I know what we did, okay? They actually brought something back from the college.
Yep.
You know, that said they were there and they did the college campus visit. I mean, and, and they were allowed free.
Free.
I think that's where the lines get blurred.
I agree.
And we had loads of comments, like it was really contentious all year. And our principals are the ones fielding those and trying to sort through that. And I will tell you what, we was to, uh, we are not getting accurate records. So the teachers were keeping their own. Some were not as accurate as others. So then it becomes the principal working with the teacher and trying to figure out. It, it was really not conducive to trying to make it equitable across the county. I, I don't know how to make it that with the, and I did ask the principals, uh, every one of them. And nobody spoke up. Everybody's like, get rid of the attendance of exams. Except for, I think I had one later in the small group.
Did you talk to teachers?
I, the group that I had in, they're talking about the pay raise. I did ask them. And they're like, look, they, they don't, they didn't want it, but now it was a different school.
Different school.
Might, might want a school, because I think if you talk to most high school teachers, that, that's just the worst.
Let's ask the question. Let's ask his question.
Years ago.
To this one right here.
It's because of.
What did they do at Bridgeport? What did they?
She just explained to you what they did at Bridgeport.
Okay.
And they came down to the, and we ended South Paris and, and RW.
And the reason I'm saying this is we have a number one or number two school in the state, in our county. And there's a lot of things. Not to go to Bridgeport, no. I never taught there, but if they've been doing something right for the last few years, be number one or number two in the state, and we have them here in our county, I think we need to be looking at a lot of things they're doing for the rest of the schools in our county.
We did it at South Paris.
There you go.
It worked. We have, we have kids that go to college. As a matter of fact, our college retention rate, the percentage, is higher than Bridgeport High School. Kids that actually finished, went and finished college, the percentage was higher at South Paris. So that exam policy worked and it prepared them for college.
I think part of the issue is, is we, we went back to all take all. When Dr. Manchin was here, he took that attendance exemption out.
So it was all take all. It was only worth 10%, it was a joke.
Right, but I think, so we got used to all taking all. We put it back in. And really, it's a combination of things. It's, we, we, this is not what it used to be. Green screen, we this does not keep attendance. We, we still are having issues with it. So you've got that.
But actually, I remember they used to have the exam form. I mean, I wasn't a teacher at the time. They had an exam form, and the exam form went around and each teacher signed off, and they knew exactly. Each teacher knew exactly who had to take their exam. And they signed off, exempt, non-exempt.
Right.
And then they, and then the kids could choose.
You didn't turn a call on her?
The kids reported back to the teacher, I'm taking this, um, mandatory, or I'm taking it for a better drug. I, I just.
One, one of the comments from one of the administrators, and I can't remember which one, is that the chronic illness form, you might have had two or three. Now they have forty. It's a lot different. I mean, doctors are writing those like, if you want a chronic illness form, you can get one. So then you're excusing a lot of kids that are getting chronic illness forms. There, the, things are different. They really are different. And I don't want to say blame it on any... Things are very different now with the kids and the populations in that regard. They, they question every half-day absence. Or if a student turns a note in late, then we have to go back in and questioning the secretary, did you get it on time? And then the secretary says, well, I got it, but I didn't get it put in. So it becomes this really tit-for-tat. It's a lot of time, a lot of time. It, it really was, and you saw the comments. I mean, there were a lot of parents that did not like that. And when I asked the administrators, they overwhelmingly said, take it out. So I don't know how you enforce it if they're not going to be behind. How do you enforce it? But I've already had them all say, we'd like that out. They did agree that they go 25%. We had a long conversation about that. So I thought that's a win. We went to the 25%. We took that out. So they kind of compromised there, I believe.
What was attendance last year?
Not good really across the county. And, and I will tell you, the school that you're talking about, they're not having a huge, their attendance was not great either. But I think there's so much to do.
So what if we just tried this for a year and see if it increases and toughens? Just see if it does it.
I think we tried it. I think we just tried it for the last two years. And it was very inconsistently applied, and I think it will be again. That's just what I'm telling you, because we field the calls, um, you get the emails. And I don't know, because I, parents had compelling reasons. And then I would overturn. I mean, getting the business of overturning the administration.
And the other thing.
And that's not a good.
The other thing that we've actually eliminated was the elementary and the middle school exams. So I don't know where we're getting all of those calls as far as absences go, but that's, that's all.
Middle school, high school. It was middle, middle, high school. Yeah, middle school, high school. Yeah, it wasn't elementary.
So you're putting this exam thing only on the high school that you're.
All take all.
All right, so what about middle school, all that? They don't?
Well, they have honorability and.
They're being tested, pre-assess. We're doing screenings, elementary thing, yeah, screening and testing all the time.
So I, I just understood that, and I thought.
But I just felt it was a good compromise, because we're in a battle trying to get from 10% to 25%. So when they went that direction, I was.
I think when principals say probably.
I think we did.
That's when they said 25, that's it, yeah.
I mean, could you, is there a way to attach, um, rewards that are not based on attendance?
You can't base grades on attendance at all.
I mean, you could do a separate attendance thing. In fact, we're rolling out, Mr. Kirby has a lot of ideas. Um, all the kids are getting, I mean, we want to facilitate them with material. You've got to be in school. You've got to do a campaign, but not associated.
It's not going to touch the high school kids. They don't care.
Semester exams.
How about we, how about Mr. Kirby comes in the next meeting?
As you, he didn't kind of explain to us.
Well, he could probably update you on the new attendance codes, which are going, they're combining them all. Give some examples of what, uh, extenuating circumstances could be a, a house, a child's house or the fire, and they're displaced, is in now with everything. Life, uh, illness, you got one code. So there's going to be no way to really tell unless.
It's doctor's notes, regular notes, anything that said my child is sick.
They convinced all those codes. We used to have one for outside learning environment, was A1. And you knew that that child was going, now it's all under, if, if they're just out for a week and not an illness, it's just apparent though. So they're, to distinguish what each absence is will be very difficult. Because they've taken probably 200 codes and made 100. Just put them all into one.
I think he could absolutely explain that.
I really, I mean.
But I was taking.
I think what you've done is, is good, but, you know, he works with it every day. And he's bored every day, and I just, you know, what, what's.
I actually, I, you know, I went to him after we talked to the, we have the principals in and the whole group. And then we have high school principals in, middle school principals in, and elementary. And they all want unassociated with exams. So I think they're going to face enough battle. We tell them that they need to do that, but.
I just wonder what the teachers think.
Like I said, the high school I had in.
High school teachers, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't want it in either, because it falls back on them.
Right.
Okay. So, but I can get a sample from the teachers.
A lot of parents come back and say, you know, you expect kids to be in school every day and they can't miss for whatever reason. But then again, my child goes to school and three of his regular teachers aren't a school teacher that day. Because they, they're out for a sick day or personal day or whatever. And yet, you're, you want my child to be punished by having to take these exams.
This is where it feels with that.
Well, I just say, I mean, it's, it's kind of tough. It's kind of tough. You know, put it back on, on the child.
Yeah, that's, that's the old.
Yes.
All right, I, I give up.
That's not something.
And I know they have.
We could really.
I tried. I tried.
We can revisit it later.
Why don't we see what the answers are there, you know, maybe bring it in our next August?
And we'll all talk about.
My God.
A little sooner, yeah.
We're only talking about high schools, correct?
High schools.
I don't know. Other than other, middle school people and elementary people, you know. I'll see who will.
Okay, on level one behavior, page two, um, inappropriate display of affection. I think you just have a typing error, but she.
Oh, yeah, like, yeah.
Unless that's something I don't know about.
Are you sure that's not a porn line?
That's what I was thinking. I wonder what that is. And then under inappropriate language, I think we should add slurs. Rac- racial, ethnic, and gender slurs, which I know we have it under bullying. But bullying is over time, whereas this would be somebody just says some, you call somebody.
You're talking about the green column?
The green column.
This is directly from state code.
Oh, so we can't change it.
Yeah, the first two columns are directly from state code. Yeah.
All right, so.
And the other, the third column you can change.
That's what we, yeah, but that won't go there.
I think we can, we can, we can add the state code. We just can't not follow state.
Well, this, this is, this is what is in Weavis. Like when they, that's what we were kind of.
That's all the principal can go by.
Yeah, so like when he goes into Weavis. No, 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 no.
But you could count it as performateness, yes.
Yes.
It's just a box.
Yes. Yeah, and where did you say it was under?
It's in, I think that's level three or four.
It's probably.
Yeah, there, and then it goes into great detail down there.
Yep.
And then under the tardiness, which I guess we can't change, but used to be, um, three tardies equal one absence in that class, so we don't do that anymore.
No, that was wrong. Be less.
Okay.
We tried it.
Well, I had to say one thing. What we did in, in, in Dorseyburg is kids came to school tardy. They said, I was in Georgia, they had to sit in the, at, in the, uh, in the cafeteria till the end of that first period, they were not allowed to go in and interrupt, let the teacher, you know, the teacher's teaching. Scott saw, Mary's here now, and I'm like, Mark. And we never, we never let them go. And then they, when the bell rang, they went to their second period class and it was counted. Absence in our first period class.
Okay, on their level two, the first one, disruptive, disrupt, disrespectful conduct. I think under secondary, there should be a counselor referral too. But I am proud to say, in 43 years, I only had one cheer.
Yeah, one cheer.
Can, can we talk about that? Because I, at least, we've made, principals can always make a counselor referral. I think it needs to be, because they were saying, well, yeah, we probably, because we had a couple times that they were in, we make the counselor.
Yeah, so I think there should be some. We can actually leave it in elementary if it confuses the. Because they can, they can use counselor referral anytime. Should be an option.
Yeah.
And it, it needs to be recorded and kept track of, not just, so Johnny and, okay, well, then you see Johnny another time, Johnny another time.
I will say, the discussions around this, we needed to do this. I mean, we were looking at different formats, the matrix, but it really made, made them all look at everything and go through that, so, you know. It's been a lot of time, but it's been a good, uh, good progress, to have them look at it.
Um, I know it's, it's two different levels. I know level two, behavior, physical fight without injury, and level three, battery against a student. I'm not sure the definition in, in between one is injured and one is not. In any case, it should be five days, or three days and five days OSS, automatic, in my opinion. Like, physical fight without injury, it says, um, second chance classroom.
It should be.
And for OSS.
Examples like this for that. One of the examples was, um, for example, if you have a student and they get into a physical altercation. And let's just say that you've got a holiday coming up, or you've got testing coming up. You want that student to be involved in. They could have one or two days out of school plus one day of in school. So they would be there on that testing day. That gives them a little bit of flexibility, the administrators, because sometimes you'll have that, that fight. And one is more aggressively involved than the other. And we always looked at those types of things.
Right.
That gave them that flexibility, which they, the principals like having that. That's just in those unique little situations.
They sure have to be able to explain that, because little Johnny gets it three days out and little Susie got two for the same thing in another situation and gets to come to school that one day. They need to really know that that one day that student coming, it's because they're testing and they're going to be in a controlled setting.
Right, and typically, in their notes, I know, I always used to do that. I would make notes as to why you did the one day of in school and two days out, rather than that was. So I still do that.
Oh, yeah.
And now they can put that into Weavis as well.
We tightened up a lot of, because it would say one attendance.
Right, right.
So we, that's where we were working to tighten up and still give them flexibility.
You know, sometimes a, a fight in, in, comes about. And a one job never wanted to fight. They did everything they could to keep them fighting and, and all that. And then, the other one is the aggressor. He's going to, and now all day, put the hammer on him, black and eye, or, you know, bloody nose, or whatever. And, you know, now, kids really didn't all want to fight, and there's always a crowd around. And they would, you know, he, he didn't want to fight, but this one here, why don't you go? So now we punished one who really never wanted to fight by putting him, you know, out of school for three or four, five days, whatever, it, it may be determined. And I, I think each situation has to be handled individually. Myself, if, if little John didn't want to fight, but he got the crack beat out of him, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of, it, you have a way on my heart to, yeah, I'm sorry, he got to get out of school for three days. He was in a fight. He not only got the fight, he also got the black eye, the broken nose, the, you know, busted up pretty good. I think that, you know, there has to be.
Get the cam, if you have the cameras to. Everybody, if we're going to have the vaults, it's there, so that Johnny right here didn't, you know.
I, I had to do that.
They always said, if you swing, come around, and you swing, you're out.
And you made fun of that.
Swing, you're out. So if that little guy was just hunkered down, he would have been out. Because he didn't swing.
I mean, he just, you know, I mean, I've had him run up behind me, goes to the table, fights, goes like, yeah, just got that. You know, I mean, just, I don't know, just. And I, and I, something's got to be done, but I just think that each individual situation.
But just being a, a guideline, I mean, as the principals are using it, they can, we can change it ea- easier than you don't want to.
Okay.
So.
They just need to have that.
For elementary, we're looking at, most fights aren't quite fights. But if you got one, and it was a doozy, it had been out for me on the first time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Two, but they're usually not. This is like the 98%.
Might as well have a pillow fight.
Do y'all have anything else for disappointing?
No.
Okay, um, on the coaches, it only mentions once that have a teaching certificate, whether they're employed or not. So we have volunteers that don't have teaching certificates, right?
Lot of discussion. And initially, um, we added back in if they had a teaching certificate, because we've had different examples. We had a, an employee that was a coach. She resigned from the school system. She's no longer an employee. She wanted to come back. She'd been coaching for three years. She wanted to come back as a coach. We had our mechanism to say, yeah, you can be a coach. So that's where the non-board employee holding a teaching certificate. Anybody that doesn't have a teaching certificate can always do the SSAC. That takes them through the whole process. We know they're vetted and they'd be a good volunteer.
Can, can we add a bullet for that?
Well, they said number two.
It's number two.
They said a classified service employee or a non-board employees. Okay, I missed that word. I missed it.
It's, yeah. This one was one I didn't go down and talk with Cindy Herbert about, because she knows people that have questions. And I said, is it, we've looked at how the words of one, because she handles all those certifications. And so we came up with the wording for, um, their non-board employee. But I agree that these coaching authorization, there should be a black bullet point there.
Yes. Yes.
We, we, so that is where we can correct that, because it's confusing. There's like four ways you can become a volunteer coach.
Right, okay.
Now.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yep.
And, and I will say, one coach is already, he's really happy to hear that they're going to be free on the high school level, on varsity.
That was out of request from somebody at the administration.
Well, and it was a really nice comment, because he said, everybody to try it out, not compete. If they're willing to do your work, then you've got more kids involved.
When you have volunteers anymore, it's like, you really want to try to use them.
Right.
And I'm pretty sure we're, we're, we talked, I thought I had talked to you about the, the principals and the assistant principals as coaches. For volunteers, coaches, I, I don't know how they, at least at the high school level.
We've not had that, but it was just in the old policy, we can remove those. I mean, there could be some rare circumstance where one of needs.
Might have elementary principal.
A couple years ago, our sports basketball team, they had to, Mark had to go step in and coach.
And my name Matthews, too.
Maybe that's why, was it still in there, I don't know.
But, I mean, I don't think we need to take it out.
It usually falls to the athletic director as the next coaching line, it more falls to the assistant. I also think, in this coaching situation, whether it's the head coaches, volunteers, something has to be done at these schools. Somebody has to take charge of who's down on the sideline. I mean, if you're having a, a head coach, assistant coaches, then volunteer coaches, maybe you have your athletic, uh, your, the, or a doctor. Then you look at some of these sidelines, and there's thirty people standing on the sideline, they all can't be coaches. I think, I think that that needs to be cleaned up, and I think that needs to be cleaned up by the principal and the athletic directors of these schools. In other words, if they're not one of the authorized people, then they ought to be up in the stands, just the same as.
I think we make that clear, if they're not a volunteer, or approved coach of some class, they should not be down there.
And, and there ought to be a list of names, who are actual people that are being there.
That's something we can address with the school principal, maybe he's there, just to make sure, because I think that's already, shouldn't.
It's gone again.
No, but sure, now, in basketball, it's a little different, because you're going to close your ring around, and you can see the.
Sit down.
They got.
With that, so we can absolutely, this probably could just be a reminder.
I mean, football's your biggest league, your biggest.
Big, big lot of difference.
I mean, it's just, it's just something I see, I go, I mean, and, and, like I say, indoor sports, volleyball, basketball, and all that. You know, usually in baseball, there's, they're in the dugout, but you go to a football game, and you're wide open on the sideline, you've got, and like you say, if somebody runs out of bounds, knocks somebody in over ten, got, uh, they end up getting hurt, next thing you know, they're wanting to sue the school. They got hurt, and if they was up in a bleachers, they wouldn't have got hurt.
There are folks that watch that, because I did get a phone call one time. It was a baseball game being televised on computer, like, I think it was a little news story, and I get a call that there was an unauthorized person.
So we did. But before they watched that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it can't happen, and then, but I'll just say, the biggest culprit is your football players.
Yeah.
You got, you know. Now, I mean, go to Bridgeport, they got five doctors, that they are doctors.
Doctors.
They're, they're doctors, and they aren't, no, but there's a lot more that are doctors, you know.
Dress code, I think we're a little late there.
The dress code, I gave you what we had before. And I had met, what was it, a couple times, something, I think it might have been a year and a half ago, we had students in. Some students, you remember, on the dress code, and they had asked about the Ted wraps, and those girls wear.
Scars.
Scars and things, and they were getting carded for that.
Well, unless they're Muslim, they don't need it.
Oh, she changed.
Unless it's a hat saying covers, with the exception of loose.
Yeah.
I, I, I think if you just, like, in that paragraph, you just say, no exposure of skin in the upper and lower torso. That should cover.
Or everything.
Or knees up.
I didn't.
And using torso.
That does cover.
Okay.
Clothing must cover all undergarment with no exposure of skin in the upper and lower torso. But you also need to address the short skirts and the dresses, and I didn't know if you wanted to. My little guy, a little picture right there, has it down to the knee, all right, so from the knee to the shoulder.
I think we said mid thigh.
But mid thigh, I mean, I just think you have to be specific, and I did write mid thigh regardless of height.
Well, mid thigh is mid thigh.
Well.
You don't know what we meant there.
Yeah.
I re, I remember when the leggings came in, and the men teachers, class changed, this was the men, because they didn't want to look. And so it was bad, it was bad, but anyway.
Really, back to your dress code success.
Um.
We've got all that.
Free of cutout areas, like, free of cutout areas.
Mid thigh to upper torso. Mid thigh to upper torso.
Then the fight is, person, well, I bumped into my daughter, and they're all cut up.
Well, then, what they suggested is that you wear biker shorts underneath your, or leggings underneath your, if the holes are above the knee. Or the rips and tears and shredded blue jeans or whatever is above the knee, then you wear your leggings, or you wear your biker shorts under there.
Well, I agree, but these are the first, like, when it all starts.
But if it's in, if it's in writing, then it's, it can, principals need something, you know, in writing that says, I'm following this policy, this is what it says. And this is what we're going to do.
Okay, um, under cell phones, I wasn't sure that second folder.
Yeah.
Off, on school vehicle, I think you meant property there.
The first one.
Well, they meant only school vehicles, like buses.
Oh, okay.
That, we didn't really have an administrative guideline on that, all we had was this, so that was just kind of quick, we didn't know.
Question, the question I have on, sorry, the question I have on the cell phone is, is it stating, if I'm reading correctly, it looks like, if your cellphone was taken at school, then you won't be able to use it after school at events. Student may possess a cellular telephone or other electronic device on school property at after-school activities and school-related functions, provided that during school hours, cell phones will be placed in lockers for the entire instructional day. So if somebody takes his cellphone from you, it's.
Yeah, I don't think that was in, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would like for the board to do the away for the day program.
I looked at that, it's a catchy, I mean, away for the day.
It's a national program, um, hundreds of high schools have joined, doesn't cost anything to join, it just gives us some teeth into the cellphone policy. We're going away for the day, the phone goes away for the day, as long as you're in instructional situation from, from seven oh five, or seven fifty-five, or whatever your day starts, to three oh five till it ends, no cell phones.
We, the conversations with the administrators, where if you, um, if you allow them at lunch, then you're already.
You're done, you're done.
So they, it's either one, it'll have to be that all-day thing, or you're, you're going to lose control. So it's once they get them out, because we were thinking, well, but you can, it's. So I don't, we just didn't know how.
If there's an emergency, you go to school.
Right.
Well, all the teachers, all the teachers have phones in the room, too.
Yeah. If we would adopt a whole away for the day as a county, then we would, you know, support that initiative. It's a national initiative, and I'm not real sure that anybody would, you know, go against it. Because if, if you look on the init, if you look on there, some of the consequences, consequences, you see the phone, you take it, it's, it's gone, it's to the office, and the kids can pick it up after school.
So the first offense, the child loses their phone, they can go down.
Speaking of. Yeah.
And section of the, parent has to come.
Yes.
The first two years, whenever Mr. Hogan, I don't know, I know this has gone back, it's twenty years.
Yeah, you are old, but, but anyway, we had that all under control, because that was one of the things that, when we went to the teachers' set,
that that's a major problem. So we spent two years, had it under control, we didn't look for phones. But if they went off, if they were talking, it was automatically, well, they are, I could suspend for that. But anyway, we had that under control, not a problem then. And then, the Board of Education, not anybody that's on this board now, at all, decided that students can carry them during the day. Well, my idea was, if somebody gives me a piece of candy, and I put it in my pocket, and they go and check your board locker, see if it's there, I'm going to tell you, it's not going to be there. So that was the same thing, we just opened it up for the children to fail whenever they did that, that's what happened. So if they have something now that's got some details, well, because to me, that's been a problem for twenty years of education and self-creation. And all of you, as teachers or administrators, you know that, that's been a problem. And we can address this to help out, not only maybe the parents, but maybe the students, but the teachers in the setting that's actually there. We need to do something.
Well, and in schools, we spoke to them, if, if we support them, they're all, yeah, they'll hold in.
They need, they definitely need to be supported.
What about staff, you know, I mean, I understand the teacher, you know, but if they're on their planning period, waiting, I don't have a problem with that. Or if they're off the way, bother themselves on lunch, I don't have a problem with that. But during the classroom time, teaching time, then they need to make sure their phone.
That's be the example.
Now, they'll have it, they'll have it with them in their purse or whatever, and if an emergency or something came up in their classroom that they needed to call nine-one-one, they would have, that would be an extenuating circumstance where they could, you know.
Yeah, when my mom got a little bit older, I left mine on my desk, and I would walk over, and I said, if it's not my mom, I'm not answering it. Sometimes the kids would be uncertain, because they could not stand to hear it. But that's a thing, what are you doing? But they could not, and since COVID, the addiction is so much worse. But you got to check for the earbuds, too, you got to, you got to put your hair behind your ears.
I think that if you not only say personal electronic communication device.
Yeah, he's in there, yeah.
And that, the teachers that I had, and that's what they were talking about, when he's teaching, they have a resume, they are not engaged.
Oh, no, no, they're.
So he said, they said that, so.
They're on your phones or.
It's, will take a while to get it under control.
Yeah, well, the principals need to be consistent. I, I won't mention the school, but one of the kids told me it was her constitutional right to text her mother in the middle of class, and I thought, I don't need to sub this building.
Yeah, we should, in that particular case, we should go back to history.
I'll go hear them, I'm sure.
It's our constitution, right?
We don't use cell phones.
We should go add, where we have in there during school hours, cell phones can be placed in lockers, I think we should add for left ear.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Drive, have a left place.
But there's some good stuff, I think, and we need to do a, I mean, they need to see it, too.
Or do some posters and.
Yeah, well, I think this needs to go online, we can do the communications online, or whatever, for parents, it needs to be prepared for the crackdown.
Well, one thing is, these kids live in their locker, and then they don't lock their locker, somebody got to buy skills, I'm, I'm just saying, that's a consequence that they take. You know, that's something that, that principals need to stress, lock your lockers, so that your cellphone or whatever can't be taken.
That was all I have, um, do we have administrator guidelines for English language learners?
No.
We might be working on that.
Yeah.
Fair warning. Not tonight, but obviously, that was all I had.
Jimmy, I don't know what time you get out on weather delays, but you get out earlier, my phone starts dinging, three, four, one, you know, they already have the parents. Is school closed today, is school, you know, I said, I haven't heard anything yet, so, because we get that.
I do try to.
I think you need to train the people calling.
Man, I don't know some of these people, I don't take calls, if I don't know, I don't need to.
You can turn the, you can turn your little ring on, stay on here.
Okay, that's true, I can do that. Um, I want to, one thing I want to look back at here, I was looking at authority to present athletic letters. You know, I, I don't know, I guess every school does it different. I don't know whether we're going to get any consistency in these schools in regard to getting their.
That was one of those old, 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 or guidelines.
And, and they, and I think the head coaches and all that shit, but the schools, all the coaches within the school should come up with the same ideas how a child's going to live. I mean, I did it different than everybody else, because I also felt that, I'm the guy who was in Georgia, who, who played in the ballgame and who didn't play in the ballgame. So I did based on quarters, or minutes, or anything like that, but I basically, that if Frankie came out, practiced every day, and practiced, and he didn't get into ballgames and things like that, it wasn't his fault, you know, because I was the coach. So at the end of the year, if a child had been in and out, and practiced every day, and went through everything, and only played a little bit for the course of the year, didn't get enough per se quarters, I disregarded it, I mattered every child that came out and participated, and then, and practiced, and.
It's in there.
Yeah, under special circumstances.
Under special circumstances, it's in there.
It's the.
Well, I'm sorry, I had something else, okay, is that on there?
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah, there's broad board, and that is, as special circumstances, I can't.
Okay, all right. What else? See that, you already answered my question.
I don't get phone calls sometimes, so I think that's okay.
All right, is there anything else in regard to administrative guidelines? No, okay. Now we shall move to superintendent's goals. We put this on here so we can start working on superintendent's goals this year. Um, this is open for discussion, but at this point, we can, um, under personnel, make a motion to go into executive session to discuss superintendent's goals, and come up with a framework, if someone so desires, make a motion. Or if not, we can.
Is that personnel motion?
I'm sorry, yeah, personnel, or, or if not, we can, um, provide instruction in what to do, and then the next meeting, we could, you know, bring five goals, each of us come up with one goal. Right, and then we can discuss at the next meeting.
Then we can go into executive.
We can go into executive, we can do what, whatever is the will of the.
If we can get to your board meeting.
Sure.
So that you can look over it, you know.
Yeah, I, I only say, right now, as of being at six o'clock, if, if we want to go into board now, take the session, that's fine, but if everyone would provide an objective, um, we could put them together, I'll put them together, bring them to the next meeting.
I think everybody does.
Everyone get this superintendent's.
We're using the state.
Goals and objectives. State, it's true.
Yeah, it was not changed.
I would just recommend we come up with, not just come in here each of us, we just one, because I would like to come in the same one you have.
All right.
So we can, we can, we can put some goals, and, yes, yeah, we can all talk about it in the executive session together.
Well, and then one of the goals has to be academic, so we're into that.
Yeah, they should, there's a.
George, back.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so there's required criteria in, um, what needs to be looked at for the evaluation process. process.
I don't know, the paper is.
I've been back.
The yellow.
There it is. I don't know.
I'm going to play it.
Thank you, mother's day.
So if we're not going to do that, then at this point, we can go to, there's no whole business, uh, we can go to personnel matters, our motion to accept personnel matters as recommended.
I must, do I, do I recuse myself?
You can recuse yourself now. You can have a motion, and, well, you can have a motion, you can recuse yourself for it.
I can recuse myself, uh, I can recuse myself, because my daughter is on the Christian of, of a position in Washington Middle School.
I move to accept the personnel.
With Mr. Hovin. Is there a second?
I can.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, brings us down to boardroom comments. Mr. Carter.
I don't have one.
Mr. Hovin.
Uh, it's been a long meeting, but I think it's been a good meeting, a long, big cover, uh, and we've gotten a little bit clearer ideas on some of the things that are going to go into effect this coming year, so I think, uh, everybody, just, and all of our staff, and their hard work, and what they really have to do to give these things to us.
Um, yeah, I just hope that all the people that came out for the Quiet Bell School realize that, once again, this is something that the school board did not create, we really don't have that much control over, and that they, they really reach out to the commission.
Mrs. Smith.
Okay.
All right, I will say, we have two pieces of homework, this board, first one being provide someone that wants to sit on the voting committee, or, or, you know, reach out to that person, see if that person's interested, and let me know, and then the second piece of homework is what we just discussed, in regard to these superintendent's objectives. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
If we seconded any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Maybe next Tuesday.
Maybe next Tuesday, yes, yes.
Five.